I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the required for which it stands, one nation-
Recording in progress.
... indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would, before we get into the regular agenda, I would just like to take a moment, begin with a moment of silence to honor former Minnesota House Speaker Melissa Hortman and her husband, who tragically lost their lives in June. We did not have a, you know, meeting in July, so we didn't have an opportunity to think about this. So, and also keep State Senator John Hoppin and his wife, who were wounded, and all elected officials in our thoughts with the hope that such tragedies never happen again. All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Move to approve the regular agenda?
No, second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robb?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robb?
We can't hear him.
Councilmember Robb?
Aye. Aye.
Kim, could you do the mayor?
You didn't do-
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, staff agenda, I'm City Engineer Brad Resteck. Consideration of Trail Study, and we have Brad on. Brad, before we get started, could you please provide us a quick summary of the first day of the project, including the city's cost share that we did for the first parts, starting from Hilton Trail to the, to the west there? I don't think all the council members were aware where we did that. Just a quick recap of that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I believe the cost share for that trail was around $25,000 to $30,000. I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me, but that again was a cost share for, I believe it was a trail segment along 75th Street here as well, as part of either the federally funded project or that resurfacing of the trail on the north side. But I believe it was around $25,000 to $30,000 that the city participated with the county on that Any other questions regarding that project, or should I jump into my agenda item here?
Yeah, we're ready for the-
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I'm seeking a motion to approve funding for the SA-12 Trail Improvements in the amount of $25,000. And I think rather than going line by line through my, my staff report here, I'm gonna share my screen. I've got a better map that's colored. I believe the one in your packet is, is black and white. So let me see if I can't share my screen. Can everybody see, see the screen or the trail, the exhibit?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So again, so this trail project was initiated by the Montomidi School District and Washington County by applying for a Safe Routes to School grant. They were successful in getting that grant. The grant was in the amount of $705,000. And so on the map here, you see there's two trail segments. This one in blue is from the school entrance at the intersection of 75th Street, and then it goes north about 400 feet into their entrance. They want to try to get the students off the streets, walking in the streets and riding their bikes in the streets and off to a safe route so that they can get connected to these other trails that are within their school campus. And then the other segment is the one on the south side of 75th Street, shown in red here, and this would be the city of Grant's responsibility. Now, even though the, the, the grant that was secured, the eligible costs are only for construction, and the engineering costs would not be eligible as part of those grant funds. And so I believe part of Washington County's policy is that they have a 50-50 split for engineering on these types of projects. So the school district would be responsible for 50% of the engineering on this trail segment here in blue, and the city of Grant is responsible for 50% of the engineering costs of, of this trail segment here. I do have a breakdown of the cost estimate the county sent me as part of the grant application. They've got an estimate of around $183,000 for engineering. And then you can see the, the construction cost here of $555,500. Now, we met, Kim and I met with the county to discuss the, the cost of the project and if there were ways that potentially we could get a better handle on the costs. You know, the two, two items that jump out at me right away are the cost for the retaining wall of $200,000, and then another line item for $100,000 for drainage. If we jump back to the map, the retaining wall is to limit the construction limits along this large wetland that is just adjacent to the shoulder of the road. So there's a wa, large wetland complex right here. They build a raw, wall to minimize the construction limits and hopefully not get into having to mitigate the wetland or impacting the wetland. And then I'm assuming the $100,000 for drainage is potentially for any issues that they would have with building this trail along the shoulder of the road. They may look at options of putting curb and gutters or some other barriers that would prevent the, the street drainage from draining, you know, transversely, I guess, across the, the shoulder and into the existing ditch. So that, so they've got some money in the estimate for that. Now, one thing you have to remember about these estimated, or these estimates, is that they're a little bit inflated. And so when Kim and I met with the county, we wanted to have a better understanding of, you know, is there things that we can do to, to minimize the cost for the city? And out of that meeting, we came away with the county willing to phase this project for the city. And so they're, they're willing to phase the project in two phases. The first phase would be a preliminary design phase where we would, the county actually would lead the project. They would go through the process of, of setting the horizontal and vertical alignments and having a really good understanding of the limits of the construction grading, and also with those limits would come the limits of that retaining wall. And so we would have a better understanding of all those costs, and, and I'm assuming they would, they would go down from where they're at in the estimate today. And so tonight I'm here to present to you folks a couple of options here, I guess. The one the staff is recommending is to move forward with approving the $25,000 to do the preliminary design. But the other two options for the county or the council to consider would be not to fund the project at all, and just, it would terminate today. And I think in that, in that scenario, the, the school district would have to go back to the Safe Routes to School application at the state and amend the original application. And so this could be at risk as well, potentially. But that's, that's another option. Or, you know, the, the third option would be just to go ahead and fund the entire project now, estimated $183,000. So I guess that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
So to confirm, because there's a 50-50 split, the entire project would be approximately $90,000 on the city?
Yes, if, if we funded the full entire project today, right? So the, again, the, the engineers' cost estimated $183,000, the city's share would be $90,000, or just over $90,000.
But even if we didn't do it all today, I mean, 25 is just the first step, and then you would, like, you would come back and eventually we'd get up to that $90,000 figure-
Correct, correct, correct. Yep, yep. So the, the 25, the, the county's gonna kick in $25,000, the city would kick in the $25,000 for the preliminary design. That money wouldn't be lost, right, if, if we decided to move forward, because we're doing essentially, you know, a 30 to 60% complete design. So that money wouldn't be lost in the design. We would just move to the next step, which is the final design.
And Mayor, councilmembers, I'll just add to that. The hope absolutely is that those engineering costs come much, come in much lower after they, they do the design, so.
Right.
So, kind of reiterate what we just said here. So if we approved the 25K for preliminary engineering, that would leave us responsible for another 92K, half of the 183. And then of the potential external funding sources, it appears at least some of those could be used for feasibility studies and preliminary engineering. And, correct me if I'm wrong, we just talked about this, Kim and Sharon, we budgeted a project for Washington County, 30K for 2025, which this 25 could come out of, right?
In the draft budget, it was $50,000.
For 2026.
Twenty-five.
For 2026.
Oh, okay.
For 2025, we're at $30,000.
Okay, right. So the question would be, for these potential funding sources, could we use any of that funding for future engineering and/or construction expenses related to the project?
Yes, we, we certainly could do that. This, this project most likely wouldn't be built until 2027.
Okay.
Designed next year.
And could we, if we, let's say we kicked in 25K now, could we pay ourselves back out of the external funding?
Are you talking about the, the grants that are available-
Yes, yeah.
-from the county?
Yeah.
Yes, potentially. The one thing that they did mention to us is that the, the amounts that we would receive were, would be small, like between $5,000 and $10,000 a year. And typically they don't, wouldn't give more than one applicant for one project during one cycle. So we could go back next year and apply for another five or 10 grand for this project. So, you know, it's not a lot, but it'll, you know, everything helps, right?
Yeah, so I guess it takes, it takes time to apply for those grants. I have no idea how much it, time would take. Are you saying, Brad, like, if your time was spent towards applying for those grants, that it would be worth it? We would-
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think so. I think with the help of the county, I'm sure they, they've got this process streamlined. And so it would be a pretty quick application. I'm not thinking more than probably two or three hours to put the application together, Mayor.
So then, in addition to the, the question before the council, if we wish to approve the 25K, are you also seeking direction from the council to apply for the external funding? Because I think that would need to come from council.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay.
Yep.
And I have one other question. Are, at this time, Brad, are you aware of any future ask the county may have of the city regarding this project? Are they only asking us to split engineering costs? And then, like you, you seemed to say before there, they'll cover the actual construction costs at this-
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of anything right now, Mayor. I know the Lake Elmo interchange at 36th, there's no cost sharing for us for that project. And I know they've got another project on Manning, I think it's a mill and overlay, and maybe a potential trail project there. But I, I haven't heard of any potential cost sharing for the city on that project either yet, so.
Okay.
So for planning for the future, if we approved this one today, it'd be $25,000, and then likely next year it'd be $65,000 if the budget didn't go down lower with respect to the engineering?
Correct.
And that 65, we could hopefully get a grant that maybe would cover approximately $10,000, to get us down to like 55.
Correct.
Okay.
Greg, do you have any questions?
No, they've been answered. John?
Well, yeah, I mean, Brad, did you say that there could be multiple years for 5,000 to 10,000 for grants?
Poten, potentially. Usually, usually they don't, this is from what I've been told from the county, is they typically don't do it in the same cycle. So the cycle starts at the end of November. So if we want to apply for this, we've got to do it, you know, soon for this cycle. And then the next cycle starts after November 1st, is what I, I think I read. So then we can apply next year again for this same project.
So in theory, we could potentially get 20 grand in grants on this project?
Yeah, but she didn't sound hopeful that we would get 10 grand. She said it'd be more on the lower side of, you know, between 5,000 and 10,000. But it all depends on how much money is available, too. I mean, they don't have a big pot of money, right? And everybody's, you know, putting in applications. But she thought they had a little bit of money left this year, that if we got ours in before the end of the cycle, that we could potentially get at least $5,000 of funding this year.
I think Washington County has more money than we do.
Well, not in this fund, they don't, apparently.
Well, perhaps they might. Perhaps they should.
Maybe.
Ben, do you have any questions?
No.
I have one more. So we have 30K budget for 2025. I guess the question to, to staff or councils, if we don't spend that money right now, I'm not aware of any other partnership projects that we could spend on, no. It's not saying we have to spend it, but we have the money available for this 25K, and there would be a matter of, with the remaining 92K, which is our half of the 183, whether we could get external funding sources and/or budget for extra beyond the 50K that was budgeted. So it kind of seems to me, if we go ahead and okay the 25K, then we would probably want to change the, the budget for 2026 from 50K to something more to that, because we, it's kind of unknown of the external funding that would come through. So does that make, make sense that we would-
I think we need to support this, at least get it moved ahead to get some final numbers.
Yeah.
While the trail goes just a short piece down to one road, I, I see the importance there with the school nearby, and at least get it far enough along where the, the school in this, in the county can take advantage of it. If the costs come in at planned or a little bit under, that'd be good.
Okay.
I mean, it seems like we've already kind of budgeted to help with some project of $30,000. And so based on the current budget that we have and for next year, it's pretty close. And so, yeah, it's a good project. It helps our students in the district, and obviously goes towards safety, which is important for all of us.
So can you rephrase that in the motion?
I can. I would move to, let me have a number, to, oh, it's not in here. It's not. I would move that we would approve the preliminary budget for $25,000 to go to allocate towards this partnership with the county for the SCAH-12 Trail Improvements.
And apply for grants.
And apply for grants. Please do that as well. Please apply for grant for this year before the November 1st deadline, and then next year for the November 1 forward.
I'll second that.
Good assist.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robb?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Okay, let's see. That brings us down to Jennifer. No action items. City Attorney Amanda Johnson is here with us in person tonight. It's very good to see you, Amanda. Would you like to walk us through your items, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, Council. In your packet this evening-
You can, you can call me Mayor. I know, Your Honor's a little bit too, too much.
Formal, sorry.
I know, you're used to being in court, right?
Yeah, it's, it's habit. So you're gonna hear me accidentally say it.
Okay.
So in your packet this evening is a memorandum regarding a proposed ordinance that was also in your packet, and we, it was published on the website 10 days prior to this meeting. When, we recently had some code enforcement matters that, you know, went relatively close to requiring court action. And as a part of that situation, I took a look into the code, and we don't currently have something in the, in our ordinances that clearly states that we can assess costs related to code enforcement actions. And so what, that's essentially what this ordinance in front of you tonight does. It gives sort of broad authorization for the city to take whatever sort of legal action is necessary to enforce our code. So that could be a code enforcement action, that could be a criminal citation, that could be, you know, the whole gamut of abatement, all of our tools that are available to us. It gives us clear authority to enter the property if we need to do so for inspections. The caveat to that, it is important to understand that if somebody were to tell us to get off their property, we would need to go get an administrative warrant. But it's helpful to have a general understanding that we have, I would call it soft authority, to enter people's property. But we can, if we're told to leave, we have to respect that and go get a, a order from a judge. It clearly states that if there is court action, that they have 60 days to appeal, that statutory as well. But it's, it's largely in the ordinance, so that staff members, we have to wait 60 days to do the thing, whatever that thing is, that we might have won. In this situation, it may have been forcing the removal of a sign, right? So we would have had 60 days before we could actually enforce that. It also says that what, assuming that we would win the court action, or whatever the legal action is that we've taken, that we are entitled to reasonable attorney's fees and costs, all of the abatement costs, basically everything that relates to that code enforcement action would first be sent to the property owner as essentially a bill. If they do not pay, then those costs would be assessed against the property at the end of the calendar year as an unpaid assessment. And so essentially it allows for the city to ensure collection of our costs associated with enforcing our code. That is a summary of what is in the ordinance. I am available for questions, but I am looking for council if you're willing to, to approve this ordinance tonight, and I can walk you through what those steps would be.
Any questions, Ben?
I do.
Thank you for raising your hand.
So it says rare and extreme circumstances. And while I assume most of the people here on the staff and then everyone have good intentions, like, what does that mean? Because later down the road, that could get changed into something that's maybe not so rare or extreme. So how could we encapsulate that into a more definitive wording to make it like, hey, we took these steps and now we're at this step, instead of this is a rare thing, what, you know, it doesn't mean anything to me?
Thank you. Counsel, I would say we could, we could amend the words. We don't have to have them in there at all. But the idea is that the city recognizes that legal action would be sort of the, the last resort. So first you're going to obviously send them letters, phone calls, potentially have a building inspector show up on the property and have conversations with them, warnings of that nature, before you would move to court action. It's recognizing that this is sort of the last step that the city would be taking. That's what that language is intended to imply.
And we're not looking to, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, I was just gonna go back onto that.
Oh, sorry, go, go ahead.
So to that end, if we could strike maybe that part, the rare or extreme, and just put in those, limited to those situations, circumstances where the city has in its judgment exhausted all other reasonable, because we've kind of encapsulated the purpose of it, which we've exhausted all other reasonable means.
Mm-hmm.
But this is now our last resort. And that way, then, your concerns about, what's the definition of rare and extreme? There can probably be a whole variety. We've eliminated that concern.
So striking rare or extreme?
That's kind of something that I'm throwing out there, is perhaps would alleviate your concern about that, and then also still meets the whole underlying policy, which is, we want to first exhaust all other reasonable means to achieve compliance, which is in there already.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I mean, it's, reading it, it just seemed very, I didn't understand what rare or extreme meant, so just some wording there, I think would help make it clear, especially if you read the policy later on, if somebody were to read it, like, okay, we have taken these steps, and now we're at this step to go forward and fix the problem. Was there anything else?
No, I think it's something else, though, on another.
Yeah, so let's, okay, I think Ben was in the middle of talking, so let's try not to interrupt everything.
No, no, that, she helped me.
Well, I, I'm leading the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
So grab my attention, and then I'll let you come into conversation. I just want to make sure we don't get in the habit of interrupting each other. That being said, is, is everyone clear what the suggested, she, I guess, maybe I'm not clear, I don't know. Greg, are you clear on, John?
Yeah, it's, 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 you know, I guess I echo Ben's issue of, you know, what is rare and extreme. So if we could do a little bit more to say what the actual process is for probably step by step, and then this would be the final step, something of that nature.
Okay, so are we leaving it to Amanda to come up with some verbiage to reflect that? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I, what councilmember Crimona did suggest was just to remove that, that statement, rare or extreme.
Okay.
Not necessarily more definitions.
Okay.
She thought that covered it.
Just trying to make sure everyone's on the same page. If that, if it's simple as that, okay.
Well, and just a point of clarification, so this ordinance is really the authority to assess costs. If there's an, if the council wants an ordinance that spells out what is our code enforcement procedure, AKA first we do a compliance letter, or how, you know, however we want to do that, that would be something separate from this ordinance.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
You go.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I did want to make that clarification, clarification as well. Everything she's described in terms of enforcement, the city already does. What this ordinance does, does is lets the city recoup the costs. That's all it is.
Okay, let's see, I have some-
That's what I was gonna make sure is accurate.
All right. Do we have any other discussion or motions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Just to make sure I am also understanding this correctly, we're recouping costs when we have to go through all, when we hit this like final thing. If somebody sends a citation, that's normal, we're not trying to recoup that, just when we've exhausted everything else. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the verbiage as we discussed for recouping costs.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robb?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
So then, the next document is a resolution, Resolution 2025-11. And what that does is it authorizes summary publication of the ordinance. So the city doesn't have to pay the money to publish every single order of this ordinance, it's just a summary of the ordinance, it saves money. So I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution- Um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, authorizing that summary publication.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five dash eleven for summary publication.
I will second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye. Thank you, Amanda. New business, we've got the, we received a twenty twenty-four audit at the very last second before the meeting. So Kim, thank you for, um, working with our auditors to get that to us. And now procedurally, we need to accept the audit. And so that's what we're looking for in a motion for here, unless anyone has any questions. Got Sharon here and Kim, but seems pretty straightforward, accepting the audit, so we would need a motion.
A motion to approve the audit.
Accept the audit.
Accept the audit.
Second. Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Unfinished business, there is none. Discussion items, staff updates. Do we have any updates from staff that we haven't talked about? Brad, no, looks like no. Um, I will turn it over to councilmembers before I share my own updates. Does anyone else have anything to share or go ahead, Greg?
I'd like to discuss Mcusick at a future meeting.
Mcusick, um, just elaborate a little bit on that?
With the, the development happening up there and, uh, as part of the road discussion and the street and the CIP that was adopted. I think with the development coming and developer planning to improve a significant portion, a majority of Mcusick, maybe now would be the time for the city to see if there's an ability to leverage that to get the rest of it done.
Uh, and maybe this can be held for the agenda item, but are you saying, um, to have the, the city order a project? Or, um, have Brad solicit a Mcusick residence, which I think he did not too long ago?
Okay.
So, so you wanted to, so Brad, can you just jump, is Brad still on? Okay, I think, Kim, I think my understanding is correct based on your nodding. So, um, it sounds like then what you are, you would be wanting to discuss is the potential for the city to order, um, a project to take?
Well, I, yep. Being new to the council, A, and B, the developer is doing a significant portion of the road, a majority of it, and we're gonna leave a piece undone. I think now would be the time to at least revisit the possibility of that being an assessment project. The city participate to some extent, the developers paying a large portion. I think at least have the discussion again. I know maybe it wasn't popular before, but margin section of that road is gonna get done when the development's done. Now would be the time for the city to at least revisit it, in my opinion.
Yeah, that, I know, Mcusick has been kind of a, a unique sore spot within the point of contention of people that live there purposely don't want it improved and, because they use it as a deterrent for, through traffic. Yet it becomes a potential safety hazard.
Exactly, it's getting to a place where it's more than a deterrent.
To look at, we can't just ignore that and, um, you know, also, and Brad's not here, but we look at the amount of money we've spent potholing that, is that just putting lipstick on a pig or throwing good money, however you want to put it? So I think that would be a?
And we're gonna add, what, twelve new property owners there that are gonna be using it to?
John, Ben, Lindsay, would, would you, uh, feel comfortable adding that to agenda?
Of course.
Agenda, okay, we got it. John?
Yeah.
Okay, Ben, okay.
Yeah, I think I brought that up, uh, when we had the person there. Um, and then, uh, we were looking at the ability for the developer, because most of the people would be going out that way where the road wasn't paved to get to Manning. And they would probably be going back to ninety-six, uh, depending on where they're going to work. So that's, that's what I brought up last time, that maybe you can finish, finish the road. Uh, and I think the residents on that road would probably hope that the, uh, developer would finish that road himself. But, uh, if we, you know, did that also, I guess that would be too much. But we'd have to mobilize at the same time so we didn't have any more mobilization costs when they're paving that if they pave the rest of it somehow.
Yeah. Okay, um, good, there, any other updates or comments to share? No, okay, I have a, I have a couple, um, things that I would like to share and get the council's input. So first of all, I want to thank the city staff, um, for their response to the storm last Monday, particularly our road supervisor, Ken Johnson. Um, Ken was on the ground clearing roads as soon as the storm passed and did excellent job coordinating with our tree service vendor, Woodchuck, and city staff, myself. I think, Kim, you would probably agree you had a lot of calls, um, and, um, and you also handled numerous calls from concerned residents and did a great job, um, updating the city website with, um, important information, including how to sign up for text alerts, because, you know, it's kind of a problem if you're counting an email from Excel and you don't have power, you don't have, um, uh, access to email. So appreciate that. And I also, um, received many calls from residents who are appreciative of Ken's efforts. Um, I did a lot of driving around, surveying the damage myself and Grant, speaking with residents who are hardest hit. And I heard their gratitude directly, so I just wanted to thank, um, the city's, uh, response, the staff response to that storm. Because we got, uh, from what I heard, um, talking with, um, the county grant, it got hit the hardest of, uh, Washington counties. It was a lot of effort. Um, just a quick update, um, kind of tying into what, uh, one of the items that we talked about earlier was the, um, ADA requirements for websites. So on Tuesday, I attended, um, the MACTA conference. So MACTA stands for Minnesota Association of Community Telecommunications Administrators. So basically an extended community of the cable commission. So all the cable commissions and the state met. And one of the notable learnings there, which is in addition to keeping abreast of what's going on with other cable commissions, was, as we already talked about, the forthcoming ADA requirements for websites and recorded meetings. And, and, um, uh, one of the things that they said is that, um, there are attorneys that look to find websites in, you know, other, other, um, uh, platforms that aren't ADA, uh, compliant. And they look to find willing partners that would sue communities. And so they said it's, um, best to be very proactive there and not, you know, let any, um, anything to chance there. And so we, we're already planning on that, I think will be good. Um, and then also, I think I might have mentioned a little bit earlier in the workshop too, um, because of, um, the continuing trend of people to cut the cord or cancel their, um, their, uh, cable services and go to streaming, the, the funds that we get from our, our own cable commission are gonna be slowly trending downwards. And so one of the things that MACTA is trying to do is drive legislative efforts to bolster funding, um, for stations across the state to kind of make up with that, um, that decreased revenue. So, um, also kind of wanted to touch upon, um, some, some concerns, um, shared tonight regarding the complaint process. So without addressing any specific comments made during public comment, it does seem like there might be an opportunity to potentially either tighten up the complaint process or, or maybe have a mechanism for the council just to get a better understanding of the process and the follow-up, um, that the city does. Because I think that, um, their, the council members would like to get visibility to that. So I just want to kind of open up a, a quick discussion and see if you guys agree. And then if so, like what would be next steps, um, potentially? Like, do we have a workshop to talk about it? Do we, we get a, um, an update e- email from, from Kim or, or our attorneys or what? Just to make sure like the council feels comfortable they're getting the, the information that they would like to see regarding complaints. So any quick comments?
I, I'd like a little more discussion, just so we feel like either there's a resolution or there's what happened to it? Because sometimes we get asked, hey, what about that? Or, you know, public comment, we hear things. And I don't know if the process would get resolved, if it was resolved, if it was a legitimate complaint or what. It'd be nice to just, you know, on the council side, some resolution of them. I mean, sometimes no news is good news, but I think we'd like to be maybe a little more informed.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I think where I would start, um, I'm not discounting anything you're saying, but let me send an email out to, to all of you so you know what the process is.
Okay, that, that would be a good first step and that's kind of when I brought it up. And so, um, I think, well, there's a good first step, we go with that. We, we, um, uh, see that suits, you know, what we're looking for. And if we think that there is, um, some potential changes to the process or, or whatever, then we can, we can bring that up and let staff decide the best way to handle if it's gonna be, um, something that they can be just discussed at a staff meeting or if it needs to be an agenda item. But just, um, one, one specific point to go along with it, Kim, and if you, um, if this is already part of the process, fine, you just include it, but if not, um, I, and also when we're looking at the, um, the budget, um, we did see, um, a, a line on like legal fees complaints, right? So we budget money to, um, address complaints from a legal perspective. It, but I, I've never really seen anything like a response from a attorney. So like, is there, is that part of the process that, um, maybe we could improve or like how, how that all works? How do we get from Jack inspecting, what you go, you're gonna jump in?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I can include that in the email where the, where that billing comes from, what, what the legal fees are.
Yep. And Amanda, you, uh, it looks like you might have some questions yourself on, and being new to the?
Yeah, I, maybe just if I could get copied on that email, that's probably the best way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can start with there and then, um, get the council up to speed. And if we see any opportunities for tweaking improvement, we can go from there. Um, yes?
Yeah, it'd be nice if, like, once we get that, if maybe Amanda, you could give insight on like what other cities do. So we can kind of see, um, if we want to keep it the same, we want to make it look more robust or, you know, what we want to do, um, to help kind of provide insight of, here's what's typical.
Yeah, I, I, if I may, one thing is Grant is small. And so you have a, you have a small staff. And so to be fair, if I'm going to compare it to a large city that has code enforcement officers, code enforcement teams, obviously they get to do more.
Yeah.
Um, so I'd want to make sure I'm comparing an apple to an apple for you all, otherwise I'm setting everybody up to fail.
Oh, yeah, no, that, that's fair. I mean, I, I, it, it stands to, um, uh, reiterate with anyone that might be listening that Grant does not proactively go out and enforce COVID. We rely on the complaint process and, um, you know, that seems to fit, you know, the size of our community and the resources we have. And so, um, good, good call out there. I think that has taken us to the community calendar. Who would like to read the community calendar?
I'll do it, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, good, because I was just gonna call on you.
No, you're gonna go alphabetical or?
Close session, right?
All right. Modem Media Public School Board Meeting Thursday, August fourteenth and August twenty-eighth. Modem Media District Education Center, seven PM. Stillwater Public School Board Meeting Thursday, August fourteenth at Stillwater City Hall at seven PM. And Washington County Commissioners Meeting Tuesdays, nine AM at the Government Center.
Okay, and before we adjourn, we need to have a closed session, so we'll be not touch?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, what we do need is a motion to go into closed session. We don't adjourn yet.
Well, I was gonna just say that, but okay, yep.
No move.
Can you read?
Second.
Well, okay, let's, let's, let's back up. I think you, so what I was gonna say is, um, I think what Kim was saying is we can't technically adjourn yet. We need to make a motion to go into closed session, which we'll have to kick everyone out. Um, and then, um, after closed session, we can adjourn. So I guess one question I had is, um, when we do that, Amanda, do we have to, um, notify anyone that might be waiting outside? I mean, there's really nothing left to discuss, it's adjournment. So I would assume that. And then did you have anything else to say? It looks like you're gonna say something.
Yeah, so in, for the agenda, if somebody could just make a motion and read out that whole thing, a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute for the purposes of, if we could get that full motion, that would be great. And then, yes, the only reason that you'll be coming back into open session is to adjourn the meeting. There will be no further business taken in the, in the open session.
All right, so it looks like?
And I assume I cannot be in the closed session.
Say, what did you say?
That he can't be in.
Oh, John can't be, yeah.
This is a closed session.
Closed, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, it looks like, uh, Greg or Lindsay was prepared to make the motion with the verbiage that's in?
All right.
Uh, we'll have to close.
Council will hold a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section thirteen D, point oh five, subsection three B for the purposes of attorney-client privileged communications to discuss pending litigation. Aluka versus Grant, Court File Number eighty-two dash C V dash twenty-five dash thirty-eight thirty-four. The council will not come back into open session after the closed session except to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Crimona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
All right, we are now in closed session, so we'll have to excuse everyone except for council. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, can we take a, a quick reset?